We'll call the meeting to order. Okay, so we'll begin with O Canada. I ask everyone to stand. So we'll begin with our roll call of councilors. All right, councillor Brent Sampson. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Don. You go ahead. You do. Pay attention to the lights.
Councillor Sean Sampson.
Present.
Deputy Warden Michael Dignan.
Present.
Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Warden Amanda Marquette.
Present.
Councillor Brent Sampson.
Present.
Thank you, Don. I'm going to pay attention to the screen on this phone, I swear to God. All right, so any items to be added to our agenda this evening? Councillor Sampson?
Yes, I'd like to add a discussion to extend a previously issued cleanup order.
Okay. Could I get agreement from other councilors on that? Just raise your hand, okay? That's great. Do we need a motion on that? No. And then, I also have an item I wanted to add. It's just an acknowledgement of a new business opening, so a bit of a celebratory thing, if folks are okay with that. Could you raise your hand? Thank you. Any other items to be added to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to have an open discussion on Remembrance Day ceremonies.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you. So Remembrance Day ceremonies being added to the agenda. If everyone's okay with that, please raise your hand. Okay. Any further items to be added? Okay. All right, so could I get a motion to approve the agenda? With those additions? Go ahead.
I move that we accept the amended agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the amended agenda. Could I get a second around that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. So there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion on that? No? Okay, thank you. So questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so we'll move on to a review of minutes. So these minutes from several meetings were provided in our meeting packages. Thank you, Yvonne, for sending those out. So we'll start with the September 28th, 28 minutes from the public hearing. So did everybody get a chance to look at that? We'll assume that everyone has looked at it, and I accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I move that the minutes of the September 28th, 2020 public hearing be accepted as submitted.
Thank you. Could I get a second around that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Brent. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the September 28th, 2020 public hearing minutes. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Thank you, councillor Sampson. And so questions been called. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so moving on. September 28th, 2020 regular council meeting minutes have also been provided. So I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes. Councillor Dignan?
I move to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. So deputy warden has moved to accept the minutes. Could I have a second or please? Councillor Brent?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So any further discussion? Okay. Thank you. Questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thanks. All those opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next set of minutes. Lots of minutes going on this time. So our October 8th, 2020 emergency council meeting. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting as well, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
My second?
Thank you. So any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. And finally, our October 26th, 2020 special council meeting minutes, swearing and ceremony. So could I have a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting, please?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from that meeting.
Okay, could I have a second around that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion to accept the minutes from October 26th, 2020. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. There's a lot of minutes. It was a busy couple of months. So, all right, so we're going to move on to our committee reports, and I'll ask deputy warden Dignan to give us the committee of the whole report.
The committee met on November 9th, 2020. The committee discussed an order to remedy condition. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that the order to remedy condition be issued for the property of Thomas Gracie, 121 Shore Road, Lower Lordways, Nova Scotia, PID 75109686, and that the order be a demolition order issued from council to the owners. The order should state to the owners that the dwelling is to be demolished and the debris be removed and disposed of in an appropriate manner within 30 days. If the property owner fails to comply, the municipality will complete the same and recover the cost.
Okay, so I have a second around that? Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you very much. So the motion is on the floor to accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding this property. Could, is there any further discussion? Okay, so...
Just as a further point, I passed by there yesterday, I guess it was, on the 22nd, and from what I could see, it looks that the building has been demolished and removed. So it looks as if the situation's been ravaged already.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson.
Question?
Okay, so the question's been called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the 15-minute question period. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that the 15-minute question period agenda item be re-added to the committee of the whole meeting agendas moving forward, with the possibility of an extension to the allotted time as required.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to return question period to the agenda. Could I have a second around that?
I second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Melanie. So all those in favor? Or, sorry, call for the question. That's right, all those in favor, thank you. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Go ahead, Don.
The committee discussed the committee structure. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that the committee structure for the municipality of the county of Richmond be approved.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay. The question's been called. All those in favor? And those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
The committee discussed the committee appointments. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that the committee appointments for the municipality of the county of Richmond be approved.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the committee appointments. Could I have a second or? Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So any further discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
The committee discussed food banks. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that the $10,000 allocated in the budget for food banks be dispersed as follows. District 1 to number 4, $1,750 each. District number 5, $3,000.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor regarding food bank funding. Could I have a second or?
I second.
Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
The committee discussed the councillor board appointments. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that councillor Melanie Sampson be appointed as a representative to serve on the St. Anne's Centre Board of Directors. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, and that councillor Sean Sampson be appointed as a representative on the Conseil de Développement Economic de la Nouvelle Casse Board.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept those board appointments. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried.
This concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of November 2020, and I move its adoption.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the committee of the whole. Could I have a second around that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so during the committee of the whole report, we heard about the addition of question period back to the agenda, so I would entertain a motion at this time to add question period to the agenda for this current meeting, if there's someone who would like to do so.
I move that we had the question period to the, back to the agenda.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the first reading to amend bylaw number 50 with the municipal emergency measures bylaw, in order to change the title and to include name references to municipal emergency management bylaw number 50, and to include the repeal and replace section in the body of the bylaw. So is there, could I have a motion to proceed with that? Go ahead, deputy warden Dignan.
Sorry, I move to accept the bylaw.
Okay, could I have a second around that?
I will second that we proceed through the first reading of the amended bylaw.
Okay, thank you. So are there any further discussion on that matter? Okay, questions been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so we're moving on to section 8 of our agenda, which is the requirement for additional committee member appointments. So based on information we've uncovered since committee of the whole, there are some additional councillors required to sit on two boards, specifically one additional councillor for the Eastern District Planning Commission, and one additional councillor for the Richmond Port Hawkesbury Joint Park Commission. So I would entertain, I guess, a motion to nominate someone to sit on the Eastern District Planning Commission Board, in addition to those who have already been appointed. I think councillor Sean Sampson, you had expressed some interest in the Eastern District Planning Commission. Okay?
Then I will nominate Sean Sampson for our additional councillor for the Eastern District Planning Commission.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Okay. All right. Deputy Warden Dignan?
No, sorry.
Oh, you're good. Just playing with the buttons? That's good. It's all new. All right, so at this point, is there any people within, yeah, so no other nominations for Eastern District Planning Commission? Okay, so I'll accept a motion to appoint councillor Sean Sampson to the EDPC Board.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. A second around that, please. Deputy Warden?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much. And any further discussion? Okay, the question's been called, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so an additional councillor for the Richmond Port Hawkesbury Joint Park Commission. Is there anyone who would have expressed an interest in that role?
Who's currently sitting on that now, from our?
That's a great question.
Warden Monk and deputy warden Dignan.
Yeah.
You are mine.
Yes. Yeah, we do need a third.
So I'd like to recommend the other three sitting around the table.
Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I will volunteer myself. How's that? I will nominate myself. How's that?
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? All right, so I'll accept a motion to have councillor Melanie Sampson be the additional councillor appointed to the Richmond Port Hawkesbury Joint Park Commission. Councillor Brent Sampson?
I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Could I have a second or?
I'll gladly second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, thank you. The question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so now on the table, we have a review of members at large. So we had several committees advertised with a deadline of November 13th to appoint members of the community at large to sit on a variety of boards, councils of committee, and would, at this point, accept some discussion on that. Has everyone had a chance to review the applications? Open that for comment or? Go ahead.
So, yeah, I've reviewed, I've reviewed the applicants, and some of them are applicants that have sat on these boards for a long time, so thank you to all of them, for sure. So for us, being a new council, the more help we can get from veteran people like this, the better, in my opinion. So I would, I would recommend that we try to appoint as many, as many veteran board members as possible, and that way they can help us, help us represent all these people, so, thank you.
Okay, councillor Sampson?
First off, I guess I would say that it was very impressive, the quantity of people who were interested, and the caliber, I think, of people that were interested, and also the number of people who were willing to reoffer. So I think that certainly says a lot about these committees in particular. I would tend to agree with councillor Sean Sampson that the more veterans we can have on our team, on these different committees, the better off we're going to be, because we're coming in new, and so certainly the more experienced, the better off we will be. I think there are also a few kind of clear choices in terms of experience of some of the people, and again, we didn't necessarily get a ton of information on everybody, but there was a few, for sure, that when I read their resumes or their histories, that they certainly seemed to fit the committees very well. So I'm not sure when we're, I mean, we'll perhaps do a round with the discussion, and then maybe chat about our thoughts on who we would pick.
Okay, any other comments? Councillor Brent Sampson?
No, I was just to reiterate that as well. There was obviously a lot of great people applied. I think it obviously makes our job a little bit more difficult, but it's nice to see that there's choices there, that it's not, there's no struggle to fill these positions, at least this time, so that was, that was a breath of fresh air.
I think it would be fair to say that this would be the first time in a while that we've had more applicants than positions on these committees, so it's very exciting. Deputy Warden Dignan?
I think I'll just add to that by saying, I was very impressed with the number of people that actually put their name forward to go on these committees. I would hope that those who didn't, I guess, make the committee they were looking for, there's lots of committees out there looking for help, and definitely require the knowledge and the background that a lot of these people that applied had. So I hope they move on to some of the other committees that are out there, and, I mean, really, we can guide them on some of the committees that do need help. So again, thank you very much for those who did apply, and, you know, congratulations to those that will fill the position.
Okay, councillor Sean Sampson, did you want to chime in? No? Melanie, you're back on, I think.
Yeah, I was just thinking as well, that similar to what deputy warden Dignan was saying, is that when we're, when we're through with our selections, I think it, you know, whether you like a motion for it or not, I think I'd like to see that perhaps you, as the warden, would reach out to these people, and perhaps, I just, there's some of them that I think, oh, they would be really well suited to a certain type of committee, or some committees that I'm sort of thinking we may end up developing, you know, some ad hoc committees or special committees, that they may be well suited to. So we definitely don't want to lose the interest, because we're very fortunate to have such a good group.
Great. I would be happy to do that. I think that's a wonderful idea. It's exciting times. Okay, so would anyone like to make a recommendation, then, for members to sit on the villa board of directors? So we would need three of the members at large who applied. Okay, so what I'll do, before we go through the motions, I'll just read out the people who applied. So we had Carla Bond, Liz Campbell, Eva Landry, Steve McNeil, and Marie Bryant. So five applicants for those positions. Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Some of the people on that list had indicated that they were previously on the board, but for some reason, I'm thinking, was Steve McNeil on that board previously?
Yes.
Okay.
Several years back, I believe. Not, not in this recent term, but prior.
Okay.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, just to further along a little bit on Melanie's question, I guess Steve actually sat as the chair on the villa committee. And so are you looking for three names of that for a nomination?
Yes, at this point.
At this point?
Yeah, at this point, we need three.
So I guess I'll start it off with the, with the three I've chosen. And again, I, you know, please, please, nobody, any, no ill feelings to those who I haven't, but, so I picked Liz Campbell, Eva Landry, and Stephen McNeil.
Okay. And are you making a motion to that effect? Yeah? Or, we could just go around. Okay, we'll go around the table.
No, I?
Sorry.
Sorry. The, yeah, no, I think instead of going around and seeing who everybody picked, I'll make a motion to accept the, those three, and if anybody has a different selection, then we can.
Sure. Okay. Handle it that way. So there's a motion on the floor for those nominations. Would anybody like to second that motion? Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Are these appointments for the entire four years?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Question?
Okay, the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we'll move on to our CMP advisory board. So our nominees are our members at large who expressed interest were Doug Landry, who would be returning, I believe, Carolyn Clackdoyle, and Robert Phillips, both of which I think would be new to that board. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, so any discussion on that? Any, anyone interested in making a motion, or we could? Councillor Brent Sampson?
No, no motion, just to comment to the effect of a couple of thoughts I had on this one, but either way, like I say, I think there's a lot of great people applied, so I'm fine regardless. We have, yeah, two from the St. Peters area, one from the Isle of Damm area, and that crossed my mind as to, because there's a detachment here, as well as St. Peters, there's also a detachment Budla Deck, but maybe it would make sense to have one person from each area. However, that's, you know, entirely up to everyone else as well. The other thing I was just going to mention, there's a couple of names throughout the list of people that had offered their name up during the municipal election, which I think it'd be great to try and involve some of these people, if possible, as well, because, you know, they had a lot of support within the community, and we can't forget that. So that's, that's all my thoughts on that, anyway.
Thank you, councillor. Any other? Yes, councillor Sampson?
Yeah, so Brent, that's, that's, those are all great points, and I'm in total agreement with you on those points. So if, if I can, I'd like to put a motion on the table to appoint Doug Landry and Carolyn Clackdoyle to the RCMP committee.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. Deputy Warden Dignan? Sorry?
Sorry. So I don't know, I guess if we have to wait to put another motion forward and proceed, but I guess since we have different opinion, I just, I was going to throw mine out there. I read through some of the qualifications of many, and personally, when we get to, and I know we're not supposed to skip ahead, but when we get to number three, I personally felt that Carolyn Clackdoyle was definitely much better suited for the PAC committee. She has definitely the background that we require, and again, it's, just going through the resumes of the people that applied for certain positions, I don't know if that's something we may want to look at, but I personally looked into, you know, Robert Phillips and Doug Landry. I know they're from the same area, but they both, they both well-suited the RCMP advisory committee, and that's just a recommendation, that, you know, looking at their background, Carolyn Clackdoyle also had some background in that RCMP advisory, but I felt that she was definitely much better suited for her planning advisory committee, since that is part of her, you know, her schooling and her background. That's just, just a recommendation and a opinion.
Okay, councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I'm fine either way on that as well. Like, I think, again, we've, we had a lot of people that I'm sure can, can do well at a lot of these positions, so I'm not, you know, I'm not set on one way or another. Yeah.
Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I would normally be inclined to agree with the whole idea of having at-large members being from either area. being from either area, but I think that we also have counselors from either area that would be representative on the committee and I think for that, my comment would be, I would probably agree with Deputy Warden Diggden, because when I read the information, I felt, I also felt, I think, that, you know, that Carolyn was well suited to the PAC and I felt that Robert and Doug or Bob and Doug were suited to the RCMP. So I think I would support that matching.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Brent Sampson?
I'd like to make a motion then to appoint Doug Landry and Robert Phillips to the RCMP Advisory Board.
Okay, so...
Why don't you rescind the motion?
Yeah, okay. So no one has seconded that original motion, so we can accept this motion put on the table by Counselor Brent Sampson. Could I have a seconder on that motion? Sorry, Deputy Warden Diggden?
Yeah, I'll second that motion to accept the nominations of Doug and Bob.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Question?
Okay, the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on to the Planning Advisory Committee. So our nominees for this committee, we have two folks who are, or two positions available and five people who have put their names forward. Carolyn Clack Doyle, Marcellin Chan Fierani, I'm probably not quite pronouncing that correctly, I apologize, Marcellin, and Brandon Boudreau, Doug Beg, and Victor David. My understanding is that Doug Beg would be a returning member and he would be the only one in that list returning. Okay. So any discussion on this? Could I maybe just poll counselors to see what you're thinking on this one? Deputy Warden Diggden?
I'd just like to personally nominate the, I guess, if we're doing nominations, I would, on my selection process, I definitely was going with Carolyn Doyle and with Doug Beg.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Carolyn Clack Doyle and Doug Beg to the Planning Advisory Committee. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All right, the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so our next committee is the Audit Committee. We have three names put forward for a single position, which is Richie Cotton, Paula Justy, and Victor David. So I'm going to poll counselors again to see if you would like to share your thoughts on that. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So although Richie Cotton and Victor David, of course, previous counselors would have lots of experience in terms of municipal finances, Paula Justy's resume, her summary was quite impressive. So as, you know, having been, I think, a partner in a CPA firm for many years in the big city and I've heard good things about her throughout the community and so I think we're very fortunate that she's put her name forward and so I would support a motion if someone is interested in making that about her. I'll leave the conversation open for a bit first, but certainly she impressed me with her information.
Okay. Any other counselors care to chime in on that? Okay, Counselor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I kind of felt similar to Counselor Melanie Sampson. I think all three would probably work well. Yeah, her resume was quite impressive, yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Deputy Warden?
I guess I would just, at this point, I would probably just move to accept the recommendation of Melanie to add Paula Justy to the Audit Committee.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to approve Paula Justy for the Audit Committee. Could I get a seconder on that one? Counselor Shawn Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So motion's on the table, any further discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, and our final committee appointment is for the Eastern Counties Regional Library. We had three applicants, Claire Rankin, Marcellin Chan Fierani, and Dorothy Boer, and I believe Claire would be returning, okay. So are there, I'd like to just poll counselors again to express your thoughts on this committee Deputy Warden?
Again, I just, I sympathize with those who, I guess, probably sent in a short saying about themselves or just put their name forward, because that's all we have to, that's all we had to go by was the write-up and I guess past experience if we already knew them. My recommendation or, you know, I would, I would move to accept Claire Rankin, from what I understand from everybody I talked to, he's been doing a fabulous job and well-liked in that position, so I guess Claire Rankin would be my recommendation.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a motion on the table to have Claire Rankin be the Eastern Counties Regional Library Board Member. Is there any other discussion? Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I just wanted to make a comment that both Marcellin and Dorothy both had expressed interest in healthcare recruitment, which of course wasn't encompassed in any of these committees, but is certainly a hot topic in the county. And so as we discussed earlier, if neither of them are the choice for this committee, I certainly would love for us to see if we could connect them with the proper committees that are outside of council. And in addition to that, I will also comment that Marcellin has a master's in emergency management and I think that, you know, if we find ourselves creating committees, we may want to make sure we contact her, she could be a great resource to us if we are looking to do that. So I would support Claire's nomination for that committee, but just wanted to make comment that, you know, the other two folks on that list are probably better suited to other things that are, that could potentially be out there.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a seconder for that motion? Okay, so the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. I know that's not, that's not an easy decision to make and it's beyond exciting to see so much interest in these committees. I do want to mention that originally advertised had been the healthcare, a healthcare recruitment committee of the county itself, but upon discussion, we had with the staff here, we had removed that committee from the list in favor of the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health Initiative, which is a regional health professional recruitment committee. So that may be something that we need to look at, sort of formalizing within our committee structure going forward, they're very new right now, just since January, but have been making some great progress and we don't want to have committees working at odds or separate, you know, siloed from one another. So if anyone's wondering about where that went, that's where that went and certainly was in touch with the folks who sit on that committee by email and I did receive one response back indicating that they would like to be connected to the new committee and some excitement around that, so, yeah. Okay, so that moves us on to our next agenda item, which is the CAO regarding the request for petition regarding researching the capital cost of sewer and water extension to a property. So I'll ask Don to provide some input.
Just prior to dealing with issue number nine, I just wanted to, as a footnote regarding the members at large, the RCMP Advisory Board requires a provincial representative that we normally advertise, so if there are any people in the audience here or in the viewer, in the viewer public that want to apply for that position, we do advertise it and it is a requirement of the, of the board, so if there are any out there, just keep your eye open on the advertisement and there'll be instructions with the advertisement to send in applications or resumes. So in regards to this petition, we received a petition from a developer who wants, who's requesting that we price sewer extension and requesting that we cost it. It's part of, it's part of the bylaw and as you can see, the petition has been signed, it's done correctly and in this situation, I would suggest that council request a staff report to find out costs associated with running that sewer line and of course, water to that subdivision area and discuss it at a future, at a future council meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Don. Any comments from counselors regarding that item? Counselor Shawn Sampson?
Yeah, I think, I think we can speak, all of us can speak the same language when we talk about our campaign and, you know, we're talking about the importance of affordable housing in Richmond County. So for me to see such a project come about very early into our term is very exciting for me, it should be very exciting for everybody in Richmond County, so I would like to put a motion on the table to instruct staff to look at the cost of running this project and running water and sewer to this land, so I'd like to put that motion on the table, please. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Deputy Warden?
Is it acceptable to, I guess, have the person that sent in the letter come in and speak to council or give them an update or just give them a brief, I guess, explanation of what it is they are looking for or what it is they're looking to do?
An overview on the project?
An overview on the project, just so that, I guess, the public knows and everybody knows what it is that we're interested in, whether it, you know, whether it goes forward or it doesn't, at least it's something that we can...
We could do that. Perhaps it might be a good idea to get the information from staff first and then whether or not you would like to proceed, depending on those costs, that cost assessment, then maybe we can arrange to have the proponent come in and speak on the project.
How, how long will it take staff to prepare that information, Don, do you think?
I think there were some, there were some numbers worked around as recently as the last few months, so I can, I can check with the Public Works Director and see how far along he's gone and I can, I can tell, I could say we could probably have something before Committee to Hold in December.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be good timing if that is possible. I mean, I know sometimes things come up and it's not possible, I just, you don't want to make someone wait for months and months, as long as it would be timely and then we could ask them to come in and discuss if it was something that we thought was feasible.
Well, what I'll do is I'll keep you informed with respect to timelines and if it's not Committee to Hold, then hopefully it could be for...
For regular council.
I just, I just thought about that and I think our Committee to Hold meeting in December is a little earlier than normal, so, because it's a shorter month, so if not for committee, for, we'll try to get for council.
Okay. Counselor Diggden, or sorry, Deputy?
Yeah, it would be nice, I mean, honestly, like everything else, it takes time, but the sooner the better, only so that we can, you know, upon the recommendation of everybody and upon, I guess, cost is going to be a factor as well, but, you know, to reiterate what Counselor Sampson said, if, you know, a project like this is, is something that we've all knocked on everybody's door and we are looking at, so, you know, to move it forward is something that we, that I would strongly encourage and again, it would be nice to have, have her present, you know, prior to the new year, so that at least they can continue to work towards proportion of getting where they have to be.
Okay, Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I think that, you know, part of the decision-making process for us is certainly the cost and then, and then the other piece of that is the benefit to, to the county and so that's the part that is sort of the unknown that staff can't provide, so I think, you know, to make a full, to have all of the information to make a decision, even to move forward a bit, would be helpful. So I think, yes, once the costs come in from staff or estimate of costs, that we should, we should encourage the proponent to come for a sit-down.
Okay, so any other discussion? Did someone second that? Yeah, yeah, so, thank you, so all those in favor, raise your hand, thank you, those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we have a little bit of correspondence to review as well, beginning with the St. Peters Sampsonville and Area Water Utility Board regarding the resignation of Lloyd Boudreau from that board. So Lloyd did communicate his desire to resign from that board to municipal staff, so I would accept a motion to accept the resignation of Lloyd from the, from the Water Utility Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I move that we accept the resignation of Lloyd Boudreau from the Water Utility Board.
Thank you. Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. So our next piece of, I guess, our next action item related to this is to advertise for a board member to replace Lloyd Boudreau on the St. Peters Sampsonville and Area Water Utility Board, so I'd accept a motion to, to make that advertisement. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I move that we advertise for a board member to replace Lloyd Boudreau and if I can also add to that, that the advertisement would include information in terms of frequency and timing of meetings, just to ensure that applicants are informed of their commitment.
That's a great point, okay. So there's a motion on the table to advertise and to include that detail, so could I have a seconder on that motion? Counselor Shawn Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No? Okay, question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, our next item of correspondence is from the Heritage Cape Breton Connection regarding a request for contribution. So I would just ask counselors, if they have any thoughts on the matter, to please share. So this was, I think, about a thousand dollar ask, I'm sorry, my screens are not working for me here, but I believe it was a one thousand dollar ask, to support the organization. They're, they host an annual Spring AGM and a Fall Members Meeting to update their members. It's a, you know, the Heritage Cape Breton Connection has been on the go for a long, long time, formerly called the Iona Connection, and they bring about thirty member heritage groups and museums across Cape Breton Island together on a regular basis to advocate and network. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So I guess I would have two questions. Number one, is this something that we've funded previously? So I guess that question is directed to CAO Marshawn and also, you know, we haven't had a chance to really do a deep dive into this year's budget, is it something that's possible?
I don't believe we've provided any funding for that organization in the past, not that I'm aware of. As far as our ability to fund this request, we could, we could go back and I could take that to the CFO and we could discuss it, see what options we have and I could provide some information to you folks by email, perhaps.
Thank you for that, Don. That would be very helpful. Counselor Shawn Sampson?
Yeah, so I'd like to put a motion forward that we instruct our CEO to look into this funding with the CFO and see where that takes us.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to have staff do a review of feasibility of potentially funding that request and I guess I would ask for any further discussion on that? Okay, the question's been called, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, motion carried. Okay, our next piece of correspondence is from John Dowling, Chair of the Straight Area Transit, regarding a request for an additional counselor on the Straight Area Transit Board. So, so again, I think we have one, we have one person and an alternate, I believe, sitting there right now. sitting there right now. Um, and that is Counselor Melanie Sampson. They have requested an additional board member, and I'd, uh, accept comments or questions from counselors, uh, regarding this matter. Counselor Brent Sampson?
Just to confirm, yeah. So, this is a morning meeting situation?
Yes.
Like they meet at nine, nine, they're, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I just wonder how open they are to, to shifting the day, the time of day of the meeting, 'cause I do think that it is a challenge, right? Like-
Yes.
Could become a challenge for me, too. You know? So, I think that they, that the, the board would probably need to have that conversation, because if it impacts their ability to get board members, they're gonna need to be a little more flexible, I suspect.
Okay. Counselor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, if it was an evening situation, I'd be more than willing to consider putting my name forward if they needed somebody else to sit on there.
Okay. Any other comments? Deputy Ward?
I'd just like to, uh, recommend Brent, now that he said that, and, uh, send maybe John Dowling a letter to see if we can change the, uh, time of the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I agree. It's, um, it is nine-thirty in the morning is pretty much. Yeah. And maybe it is open for, you know, open for them to change.
Perhaps our first step would be to connect with Straight Area Transit and Counselor Melanie Sampson. If I could ask you to, uh, reconnect or connect with, uh, John Dowling regarding that matter of the timing. And then if the timing does work out, then at that point, we would have a better sense of, you know, who we could appoint as a second person to that board. Does that make sense? Counselor Melanie?
Yes. And if there would be, I guess, I'm just looking for the, you know, the, the feeling of, of the, um, other council members, is if, if they could do it through, like, a telephone conference or something like that, would counselors be able to join? Like, let's say it was a one-hour meeting at nine-thirty, but you could join by phone? Would that be a potential option as well? Just as I'm working through options with them.
Counselor Brent?
Yeah, morning wouldn't likely work well for me. It'd just be un- too unpredictable. Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't think we need a motion to that effect. We're not putting a board member there, but, uh, Counselor Sampson, if you wouldn't mind reconnecting with John Dowling and letting us know how that goes, um, certainly, uh, we're the organization that we are happy to support. So, thank you for that. Um, so then we had several items added to the agenda. I believe the first one was regarding a cleanup order, um, and we're from Counselor Melanie Sampson.
Um, so just a, a quick history, um, uh, the previous council issued a cleanup order, uh, to Duble Matthews at four-four-three Black River Road, Grand Ants, uh, PID seven-five-zero-three-three-six-seven-zero, um, and AAN zero-three-zero-eight-eight-one-six-two. So, that's the, the formal part of it. Um, since that order was issued, uh, he has been given a couple of, uh, extensions. So, the least extent, the last extension from my conversation with Mr. Bain at the Eastern District Planning Commission was, um, September twenty-eighth, and he was given, I think, sixty days. Uh, but after thirty days, Mr. Bain would decide whether or not it would get extended. Um, and so that extension is coming to an end in the next five days, I think. Um, so I've, I've, uh, spoken to Mr. Matthews on several occasions, um, and Mr. Bain's staff has been out there as recently as today to take pictures of the property, to see if there's progress that's been made. So, there has been some progress, but there is still a bit of a ways to go. Um, and so, uh, I'm looking for support to extend this cleanup order, the due, the date of the, uh, cleanup order, um, just because, uh, Mr. Matthews has experienced some, uh, personal issues that I, you know, that are out of his control, um, and that I think, you know, he has been showing good faith in terms of moving forward with the cleanup. Um, so I want to further say to that, that, um, in my conversation with Mr. Bain today, I, I suggested that a thirty-day extension was probably not going to do the trick, because, uh, we would be moving into the wintertime. And so, with December weather being unpredictable, um, my feeling was that we should postpone it to the spring. Um, and how, and however, what I would say to that is that there needs to be continued updating, meaning, uh, I'd like to see the staff of Eastern District Planning Commission, um, continue to take photos and see progress, uh, uh, at the property. So, perhaps they would revisit every thirty days to see what is happening there. So, the, so my recommendation is that we, um, give a further extension to April twenty-eighth, I think, 'cause that just makes it, the date was the twenty-eighth, um, but with frequent, um, check-ins and updates by the EDPC.
Okay. Um, I, that's, were you making a motion to that effect? Or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yes, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the order to April twenty-eighth with instructions to EDPC to perform frequent check-ins, like thirty days or so.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the floor to extend that, uh, that order, uh, to April twenty-eighth with monthly check-ins. Um, could I have a seconder on that motion? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. And, uh, like Melanie, I guess, um, you know, we don't want to be known as the Grinch before Christmas, so, uh, you know, if the gentleman is having, again, we just got in this position, so it's, uh, if he is doing, you know, moderate to whatever cleanup, it is getting done. So, let's, let's give him a little more time, and I think it's more than fair if we give him till April and reassess then, then, uh, yeah. If it's not done, then we'll jump into action, but I, I agree.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on that motion? Okay, the question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Um, and I had added an item to the agenda, just to recognize the opening of a new business in our county, um, in St. Peters. The Farmer's Pantry opened today. It's a brave thing to jump into entrepreneurship. I think it's a very brave thing to do it right now. So, so congratulations to, congratulations to Jennifer Snowden on her, on her opening day. And, um, you know, I think, uh, I, you know, I would be happy to send a letter on behalf of council to that effect if, uh, if everyone was in agreement. Okay, great. We've got some consensus there. That's great. So, um, I think the next item on the agenda was Counselor Sean Sampson. You wanted to make a comment on Remembrance Day ceremonies.
Yeah. I mean, for me, I, I think we can all agree that, uh, this year's been a tough year for everyone. And, uh, just recently, the Remembrance Day ceremonies, uh, were affected all over our region. For me, I had the opportunity to, uh, visit the Branch One-Fifty Ceremony in Eryshet. And, uh, of course, because of social distancing, uh, there were ceremonies at, at the cemetery, there were ceremonies at T-Bowl properties, there were ceremonies at the Legion. So, everybody was spread out all over this community and all over the county. But having said that, uh, most times, uh, a lot of people are in the parking lot at, uh, the Legion in Eryshet. And, uh, while, while the ceremony was, was taking place, uh, we had a couple of ATV riders pass during ceremony. Had a couple of vehicles with, uh, some music on. So, I found it very discouraging. And, uh, I went to talk to the Legion members afterwards, after ceremony was over, and went to talk to them and, and just discuss the possibility of maybe, uh, closing the road on each side, uh, during that fifteen, twenty-minute period, uh, which in Eryshet would be very easily done. Uh, we could send a letter to the Fire Department, the chief, and, and get him to, uh, to close down the, the road in Cape Oget, so people leaving Cape Oget could, you know, venture off towards Eryshet, and then also close the road off, uh, towards the I Road in Eryshet Peninsula. There's only a couple of houses there, so that would be, uh, very easily done. And, uh, you know, it would help, uh, and not interrupt, uh, these very important ceremonies, in my opinion, right? So, I, not only Eryshet, I think, uh, if and where it can be done all over our county is something we should look, uh, look into for sure, right?
Yeah. Certainly, the noise of traffic was a factor in St. Peters as well, and, uh, less so in Repubshoa, but still, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, for me, just, uh, you know, getting in touch with, uh, the RCMP, with firefighters, uh, our volunteer fire department, you know, to close the roads for fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, so there's no interruption to the ceremonies, I think, would be, uh, a great thing to look into, right? So, just want to bring that up. So, hopefully, we can discuss that, maybe put a policy in place in the future.
Mm-hmm. Any other counselors want, care to chime in on that, uh, matter? No? Okay. So, perhaps we could, um, ask you, Sean, to connect with our CMP Advisory Board and, let us, you know, let us know an update on that, kind of going forward, so. Okay. Thank you very much. So, I believe that concludes our regular items, and we're on to, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Don.
I think, in reference to those, those comments, I think that, uh, I think the proper people that we'd have to contact would be Department of Transportation. We likely need to get permission from them, um, as those roads are under their care and control. So, uh, perhaps, uh, staff could, uh, check into that, uh, as opposed to, uh, checking with the RCMP. I think they would, if you, if we contacted them, I think they'd refer us to the Department of Transportation anyway. So, perhaps we could, uh, instruct staff to, you could instruct staff to get the, uh, some information on that, and could present it to you at, uh, a future meeting.
Yeah. Generally, I know with parades, that kind of thing, we, we, RCMP is the contact for traffic control type of thing, and then we do, you do need to file a permit with TIR to, to have that done. So, so, yeah. So, we could make an addition, then, uh, and a motion to, uh, ask staff to research that information? If you'd like to do that?
Yeah. So, I'd like to put a motion forward for staff to, uh, research the possibility of closing down somebody's roads during Remembrance Day ceremonies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, the motion is to, um, ask staff to, uh, research with TIR on, uh, closing down roads for Remembrance Day ceremonies. Any further discussion? Question's been called. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So, I think that wraps up our, um, our items added to the agenda, and we will move on